All right. Call the board of directors. Everybody rise for the pledge. Peasants, please.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's no agenda adjustments tonight, and we are being videotaped. Any public comments? From anybody? I'd ask for a motion to approve the set of minutes.
Second is...
Motion by Situitt. Second by Hanover. Any discussion? All in favor? Next is the student advisory. We're going to get it from Cody Campbell. He's our new student representative. And Cody is a senior and the MET program. Thank you, Cody.
Hello. Thank you for the introduction. So, this Friday, May 21st, thirteen-plus students will be traveling to May Center School for Autism and Development Disabilities in Randolph. They will be helping to facilitate the running of the Special Olympics events and help in whatever way they are needed. South Shore Tech has been attending this event for several years now, and has always been a very rewarding event for the students. And we'd like to give a thank to Ms. Bellatoni, who is able to coordinate and chaperone for this event. Next Friday, September 28th, the Student Council is hosting a meat raffle at the Rockland Eagles at 7:00 PM. There will be raffles from multiple different platters of meats and many different prizes you can win. On September 30th, we will be hosting the Second Annual Kentay Oka Show, sponsored by the Parents Association. There's no charge for the cars, but there is a $5 charge per person. And at the Oka Show, the Student Council Juniors will be selling T-shirts, and Seniors will be selling fundraising calendars. The calendar sales will continue through the months of October and November, with drawings beginning on the first of December. Be sure to reach out to Student Council members or advisors to get calendars, or come visit the T-shirt sales at the Oka Show. And all the proceeds from the Oka Show will be going to the Parents Association and Students On Saturday, October 20th, Parents Association will be hosting their craft fair. There'll be over eighty crafted tables, and we'll be open to... with various crafts for you to buy. It's a great opportunity to buy Christmas gifts, birthday gifts, or home decor. And then, finally, on Saturday, October 27th, we will be hosting the Haunted Hollow, which will provide games and activities for younger members of our communities and their parents to come have fun and celebrate Halloween.
Great. Thank you, Cody. Next, we'll move on to the reports. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your package, we have the Treasury Report through the end of August. We did not meet in August, so this is a two-month report showing all the activity. First page unfortunately has a logo of the Patriots, who were unsuccessful in that second game the other night, so if I'd known that, I would've put...
They're on there, too.
I would've put the undefeated South Shore Tech golf team on here, knowing that, you know, as of three o'clock today, before today's match, but I heard that they were undefeated, as well as the girls' volleyball teams. So, sports are going off fine, I guess. We have, page one is the cash balances. As of the end of August, the total cash balances in our accounts, operating accounts, about $5.7 million. The OPEB reserve account, $655,000. So, obviously, we're in a very strong financial situation as we close the fiscal year. We did a lot of adjustments back in July, but we have a surplus for the year, and again, our cash position is very strong. Page two of the report is our revenue for the current fiscal year. As you are aware, we bill our member towns on a quarterly basis. The first payment from our towns is due in August, and all the money that was generated from our member towns was received. So, we bill like $1.9 million on a quarterly basis, and everybody's paid up, and everything's good. We've also received our first two installments of our Chapter 78. Again, that eight comes in on a monthly basis, like clockwork from the Commonwealth. So, overall, that gross income for the first two months of the year, just a little under $2.7 million. And finally, our last page of the Treasury Report is our expenditures. Payroll numbers are very low in comparison to the budgeted numbers, only because the teachers who get paid over the summer are getting paid off of last year's budget, the way the contract is written, so that the teachers don't start getting their fiscal 19 pay until September, so the teacher's pay is not on this report because it's, you know, they weren't under contract for fiscal 19 during the summer. So, everything else is going along fine. There's not a lot of concerns or anything that's going on financially from a spending problem, spending issue. One item on line five, the county retirement. Our budget is $400,000, and over the past few years, we just write one check at the beginning of July, and we pay that off in a lump sum. Plymouth County gives us a discount if we pay it all upfront, so we write a check for $367,000 in July to take care of that. So, other than that, everything is going along fine. One item that we'll adjust in a second is line 35, which is the school insurances. Again, we guess a lot on the school insurances based upon rates and so forth, and we were a little shy on our budgeted number. We'll be doing a budget transfer in a second for that. So, that's going to be a little... they came out to be a little bit higher. Again, as the budget process, I think Tom will talk a little bit tonight about the whole timelines and so forth, but we guessed back in December and January what our current year insurances will be, and there were a couple of rate increases, and we added some coverage as well on a couple items. The good news for insurances, our workers' comp is going down, so we're... overall, we'll be in a good shape. So, overall, our spending for the first two months of the year, $1.1 million, so we're in good shape financially.
Thanks, Jim. Ask for a motion for the Treasury Board? Situitt. Second by Rockland. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
In your package, we have requesting a budget transfer of $4,000 for the insurances. Again, we have to add some money into the school insurances, and we're offsetting that with the savings that we have in the workers' comp insurance based upon the recent audit from our insurance company, so.
Ask for motions. Whitman. Second by Hanover. Any discussion? All in favor?
What was the number last year on the insurances? Has the rates gone up or have they been...
The rates did go up on a couple line items. I mean, the coverage we have for our vehicles, the coverage we have for just our general liability, and there's also student insurance that we carry as well. So, there was just some minor increases across the board, usually about three or four percent, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, Bob, if I missed you.
It's okay. Not a problem.
All right.
Other updates, just want to inform the committee that we're in the process of going... moving to the cloud for our accounting services, and it's an exciting time in the business office where we'd like to thank Crystal for all of our help through the IT department and Joe, and helped make the transition, along with Polly. Been a lot of webinars and so forth over the past, you know, month, six weeks. Tom's even had a chance to sit on one. So, pretty much, we're going to... right now, we've got a big box in our office that produces a lot of heat and a lot of noise as a server, and we're going to take that offline. We're going to the cloud through our Tyler technology vendor. It's going to allow some access for a better workflow. There's going to be some online purchase orders, information that will flow. We're going to get rid of a lot of paper, the way it works right now. Our payroll system will be also through the cloud, and will allow greater access for the employees of the school district to have access to change direct deposit items and to look up their pay stubs and other things that are normally just confined to the business office. So, Tyler's a nationwide company, they're secure, everything's good, but it is a step into the next direction for technology here at the school, so.
Pat's not even gone a month.
And Pat has retired.
Jeez. I guess so. You wouldn't be having that computer system reviewed, would you?
Yep. Pat did retire in the middle of August, and Tricia's been doing a fabulous job as her replacement with the payroll. We got through the first payroll cycle with the new teachers and the new teacher contracts. Things went well. She's acclimating herself to the office and to the staff, and is getting along with everybody tremendously. Sylvia continues to do a great job. Again, this is the big rush, the beginning of the year, other than trying to find out who a box of binders that came in, and no one knows who they're for. That's taken a lot of time to chase that down, but things are going well. The influx of the buying of the new supplies for this year are ongoing. She's keeping up to date and doing a great job with that. So, overall, the business office, you know, Tricia and Sylvia doing a fabulous job, so.
I think we need to make a vote on the budget transfer.
Yes, we do.
I think we had the motion in the second.
Yeah, we didn't take it.
Okay. We just need a final vote, so. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Chairman, all's I have is the subcommittee is inside, the assignments for the subcommittees. So, if there's any questions, let Tom and myself know. And there's no subcommittee reports tonight, and now I'll hand it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start by turning it over to Mr. Aubrey and Ms. Baldner, who have some administrative reports for the start of the school year.
Good evening. Thank you. I get comments on my yellow shirt today, so things are as bright as my shirt is today. We have... Jim was kind enough to mention that he's going to the cloud, and we're going to have less paper. That is a theme throughout the building. We are going to more of a waste reduction method within the building. Just today, we started recycling in all our classrooms and all our shops. We've done a lot of training. The Science Department, led by Mr. Filano in the back here, has gone out and trained all of the students on how you're supposed to recycle, and how things need to be cleaned and separated and things like that, so we've gone to a single-stream recycling system throughout the entire building. So, if you're in the gym, or you're in the cafeteria, or any classroom or shop, you're going to see the blue buckets, and they house paper, they hold plastic, and any of that kind of stuff. We have separate bins out back for that, as long as... as well as we continue to do metals and cardboard and all that kind of stuff is going on. But this is a big push within the building to use less paper. We have staff members in the building that are trying to run their classrooms 99% paper-free. They're using Google Classroom and all the technology that we have supplied to them to be able to run their classrooms without having to do the paperwork shuffle and print things out, and ink, and everything else that does to the environment. We are truly hopeful to do a lot of good for the environment and do a lot of good for our students, teaching them about proper recycling skills and things like that. The other initiative I'm going to talk about is branding. This is something that's been going on, and I'm sure you guys have been made aware, that if you call the school, we refer to ourselves as South Shore Technical. We are South Shore Regional Vocational Technical High School. We are SSVT. We are the same school we were in June. We are put together a task force, and I will call it a task force. We have people from the outside, we have staff members, we have students, we have parents. We brought everybody together to talk about this, and it came down to the fact that we wanted to get rid of the term "VOTech." We do the same things, we teach the same technologies, we do the same equipment every day that we did last year, but we're not "South Shore VOTech." We don't want to refer to us that way. We don't want to be that school, in part, because unfortunately, there are people in the community that still refer to us as "Slow Tech," even though you gentlemen know that is far, far from the truth of what we do in this building and where our students go to college and high-paying careers. That just does not happen. Besides changing the name, we're also looking at putting together an entire branding guide. Mr. Hickey has been helpful. Carolyn Rutowski, who is our department head in Graphic Communications and DVC, has been very helpful in putting together this packet. It will talk about school colors and exactly what they are and what they can be for athletic clothing, for drama clothing, for shirts that we produce. Mr. Mahoney is over there wearing a shirt right now. We will have the same brand on the front of all our shirts. It'll say "South Shore Technical High School." The back, where you know if you've been through the shops, all the kids have different backs on many of the shirts or up to the departments, those things are going to be the same, they just cannot have "VOTech" on them. So, we are looking at kind of bringing all that up. The other thing we're going to do, and it's something that Ms. Baldner has been pushing, and I think it's a fabulous idea, is we are... every year, we supply the ninth graders with new T-shirts, and they say the class of whatever on the front, they say "Respect," and it talks about all the responsibilities of being a good Viking student. We're going to shift that. We are looking to give every student, starting with our upperclassmen, a new polo shirt, black, with the "South Shore Technical High School" embroidery on the front of it. Think of it as their out-of-the-building shirt, so when they go on field trips, when they go to the college fairs, when they go into your communities to work at Hanover Days or Rockland Stroll, this is the shirt they're going to wear. This is how they're going to represent us, always with the same top and a nice pair of pants on, and we'll be that school that everybody... oh, that's another kid that's in South Shore Tech. I see them all the time, I see them in all these events we do throughout the town. That's just another little thing we can do to get ourselves out into the community and let them know that we exist and what we do, and what we do very, very well every day in this school. The final thing I want to talk about is, we are going to change our Viking head logo. It kills me to drive through East Bridgewater and see the same Viking head. I don't mind sharing it with the Minnesota Vikings, that's fine, but to be just two towns away and have somebody else with the same Viking head. So, with the help, once again, of Carolyn Rutowski, we are opening up a contest to the students to design the new Viking head. It'll be personal to South Shore Technical alone. We'll have our own Viking head that we can use, and we can put on our athletic shirts, we can put them on anything we want, but we will own that. That'll be developed and created by our student population. We're going to ask that they have them in by the holiday season, and we will pick one to be the new school symbol going forward, probably about February 1st, when freshmen get into their shops. Anybody have any questions? Jack?
Changing of the name, I'm still calling the Mystic River Bridge.
It will be a long process, and every once in a while, I will admit, I still do say "South Shore VOTech" when I pick up the phone, but for the most part, you will find that if you call the school, the receptionist and the administrative aides, I say "South Shore Technical" right on the front desk, and there's a sign that says "South Shore Technical" to remind them. That just... it's a small thing, and it's going to take time, but it's something I feel is very important to describing what we actually do in this building.
I agree, but bear with me.
Yeah, like I said, I still slip.
It's only been 55 years I've been calling it "VOTech."
Yeah, I know. I know.
Remember, the Viking was a redhead.
Yes, well, hey, it's up to the students commanding. I don't have any... Mr. Moore?
Yes, I brought up changing the Viking when Mr. Cormier was the Student Council President.
Yes, Dan Jacob, yes.
That sort of went down the drain, and I'm glad to see it. It's time to change it, put a smile on his face or something.
Yeah, yeah. Make him... let's look like the carpentry instructor days. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You have to make the school proud and the students proud of the school.
Right. And that's part of the buy-in. They're going to create it, and it's going to be theirs to own, so I think it's a great way to get this started kicking off.
I just had a comment, and I addressed it with Mr. Hickey. I was caught by surprise, I didn't know anything about the changing of branding, which I'm in favor of, but I was just wondering if, with the different communications of, you know, our Twitter page, all these other, you know, social media pages that we should've had done beforehand, I think it should've been all done along with this rollout, just so it's all...
And we have been working with...
That's just my personal opinion.
No, I understand entirely. We have been working with Crystal and the IT department. Mr. Hickey has been kind enough to go out and buy the website in the name "South Shore Technical," but changing all those things over is a monumental task.
I understand that.
And it's something that we're going to have to do, and we want to do, but it's something we can't flip a switch and be "South Shore Technical," you know, as you look us up. If you type in "South Shore Technical," it'll come to our school, but we can't change the name and the emails and all the exterior stuff that we use, Connect Ed, all that stuff has "South Shore Vocational Technical" on it, so we have to work at that slowly.
Yes, I'm all set for it, but we still cannot change our official name.
Oh, no. Our first name is "South Shore Regional Vocational Technical High School." We will be that until I leave here, and I have no intention of that.
Mr. River Bridge.
If you brought it up before we did our...
We added words to our school title in our regional agreement. We've got more words on the official document.
Yes, but it's very hard to say "South Shore Regional Vocational Technical High School" every time you pick up the phone, which is a part why we went to "South Shore Technical." It's just a mouthful, you know.
Mr. Chairman, I would say that what we could certainly do is drawing a line backwards from, you were saying, February. We could certainly have these items on an agenda with a timeline so that some of the student work can be shared and...
The idea is that I will bring you the student work in the January meeting, so you'll be able to see it, and you guys can have a say, as well as the student population and the staff. This is an entire school community, all, everybody that's involved, and this has been from the beginning with the parents and the students, and it will continue all the way through.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Aubrey. Good evening, committee. Happy new school year. The energy that Mr. Aubrey brings to the table tonight is the energy you will find in our building this year, so it's exciting times for students and faculty. South Shore Tech is teaming with students, in fact, we have 645, to be exact. With strong planning and leadership, we had a nice, smooth transition back to school. This name keeps popping up tonight, but it's without a doubt that we need to commend Crystal Paluzzi, our IT director, for her paraschool scheduling wizardry, for getting students in the right class with the right teacher at the right time, so compliments to her. And I really want to compliment teachers and students for frankly surviving the September heat wave. It really was a very hot time in our school, and it was perseverance and patience that faculty and students are to be complimented for sticking it out, staying in school, and getting the job done, as we do here at South Shore Tech. So, excellent work for all. I would like to compliment the District for Hiring, Bob Foley and Keith Boyle. They're excellent additions to our administrative team, and our school. They've already taken strong leadership as vocational coordinators in their programs, in the areas of safety throughout the building, recycling, and co-op, and they are building strong relationships with educators and staff. Can't wait for you to learn their successes here as we move forward, so good job. And to that end, our new administrative assistants, other new folk to our building, Mary Lemos and Nicole Connors. Mary Lemos is our new assistant to the principal, and Nicole Connor is our assistant to the vocational coordinators. These two professionals come from school environments, and their skill sets are deep and rich, and you are going to see great assets come to the school as a result of their skill set beyond reception and basic administrative support, so they're really going to be a fantastic addition to our school. So, exciting... excited about that. There really is some palpable excitement in the building, and in part, that's due to the creation, with your support, of the new Career and College Center, formerly our library location. And compliments to Joe Madera and Paul Bello for their leadership in developing opportunities for students to expand in that location, their understanding of career and college opportunities, and to interact with professionals in both lanes, so kudos to them. A quick shout-out to Joe Madera as well, who spent a greater part of his summer developing and rebooting our entire guidance curriculum focused around career and college exploration in a way that we haven't seen in the past, so looking forward to seeing what kind of benefits that reaps, but he did hard work there. We had, in the CCC, we fondly call it the CCC, we had our first Friday event. It is a social on... we had the first one on September 14th last Friday with Mass MEP, who's a company who's committed to helping manufacturers grow in the area, and that was a successful event. Our next one is on October 5th at 1:30. We'll host a health services event, and the objective of First Fridays is to provide students with the opportunity to practice interpersonal communication with adults while acquiring the information they need to be successful post-secondary career and/or college. You are all more than welcome to join us at any First Friday event. The next one, again, is October 5th at 1:30. I'll be sure to share the time as topics as they are scheduled. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, Sandy, while you're there, I just would like to... I'd like to say that this was a very, from my vantage point, a very smooth opening. The teachers were ready, students were ready. The administrators designed a great opening to the school year. What you heard from Sandy is the same sentiment that you would've heard at a faculty meeting. Now, this might strike you as odd, but I'm going to ask Sandy this question. Sandy, can you comment at all about the inflatable pineapple that you brought to the faculty meeting?
I will bring it to school committee next month.
Why are you always talking about pineapples?
So, pineapples are the traditional symbol, as you may know, of welcoming, and so it was part of our welcome-back packaging to faculty, in our posters for welcoming staff back, in our PowerPoints and welcoming staff back, and we are now welcoming staff into each other's classroom as part of a pineapple charting initiative. It's not my idea, it's an industry trick, where you post your... what's happening in your classroom on a poster board or a whiteboard. We'll probably use the Google Classroom as well to support it electronically, and teachers then post their welcome mat with a pineapple on it on their door outside their classroom, and they welcome you in to see what's happening, the good things that are happening in their classroom. So, you know, if you walk through the building, you see a pineapple poster on it, it will date the time and the event happening in that classroom, and you know that you are welcome to come and observe and ask questions afterwards about what that curriculum initiative was. We had Mr. Jerry Bova come to me first thing this morning to ask for a pineapple that he could put on his door, because they're doing an SEI strategy later in the week in their CO-TALK classroom, and want to share that strategy with teachers across the building because they're excited about it, so I'm hoping that this is going to take off.
Could you do SEI?
It's for... it's Shelter English Immersion, so for our students who struggle with literacy.
Great.
Yes, on that pineapple, that's an old tradition.
Old timey.
Old houses used to have pineapple door knockers, and it was a welcome inside. That goes back to the Pillman days.
I have a pineapple on my door at home, too, so keep the pineapples coming.
Mr. Aubrey?
I do want to compliment Cody on giving us a rundown of all the weekend events that we'll be spending time here over the next month. Unfortunately, he did leave out one of the most important events we do here. October 13th is our annual Open House, where we invite the public in, crossing off Mr. Hickey's list over there.
Thank you.
From 10 to 1. This is the annual, and I know many of you guys make the trips in to see what our students are doing. This is an opportunity for people in the community to come in and watch our students at their best, doing their performances, and finding out what this school is all about, and I invite everyone to come and see what great work we do day in and day out in this place. Thank you.
Pineapple is the foundation.
We'll probably do something, Dan, we will.
And for the benefit of the audience at home, we do take... we do ask everyone at our Open House to register so that we can follow up with anyone who comes, grade seven, grade eight. Typically, that's the vast majority. But we also have deployed a pretty efficient system of onboarding, online applications, and interviews. So, prospective parents who are bringing their children who are in grade eight, we're going to encourage those families who want to apply on October 13th. We're going to have staff available to guide them through that very simple process, and we'll also have staff who will be able to onboard a very brief interview, which is a required part of the application. And so, again, that's running from 10 to 1, and plans are in the works for that. You'll see the signs around the district very soon. Mr. Chairman, I'll continue with my other few items here. As I give you every September, Document 8 is a budget timeline. Document Eight is a budget timeline. It has largely stayed the same. I had a budget meeting already today for fiscal twenty with some administrators talking about technology. And so I'm beginning the process a little early unofficially, but the fall is typically focused around getting the year started and then having our department heads work with our administrators on building their department budgets. It'll culminate with the November first Advisory Committee meeting. I'll remind you of that at the October meeting. And then we'll spend the month of November drilling into the numbers so that I can give you, make a presentation to you at our December meeting. In January, the last few years, we've delayed our January meeting until the fourth Wednesday of January to coincide with the governor's budget coming out. And that's the usual, it comes out at three o'clock, and we know what Jim's doing from three o'clock to seven o'clock, and then at seven o'clock, we can, we can project out what, what we think the impact of the governor's numbers are. And then we would get together for our February meeting to certify the budget. But we're beginning the process, as usual, using all the necessary technology available to have departments build very specific zero-based budgets that allow us to move dollars around. Facilities update. I did provide you some earlier information earlier this summer. Very pleased, as always, with what Bob Moorhead, our staff, custodial crew have, have done. Outside contractors have done some amazing work as well, as we've replaced flooring in our library CCC area, the Student Services or Guidance area, and as well as our main office, and new epoxy flooring in our HVAC automotive shops, as well as our girls' and boys' locker rooms. We're continuing to make progress with the renovated barn area, which, as you may recall, is going to be a locker room and an area for horticulture. We'll be continuing that work. That should be operational for athletics by our spring season, and work is underway for, for the greenhouse. Certainly, you're more than welcome anytime to take a walk through. I'm very pleased, I know you are too, that we continue to make the school not look its age. And as a sidebar, as I've said to you in the last three, now four years, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for December of this calendar year to find out about our MSBA application that was submitted in April. This has been our, this has been our regular routine. But in the meantime, we don't, we don't catch our breath. We continue to do what we can with regard to making the school look the best that it can. I'd also like to say thank you publicly to the officials in the Hanover Public Schools. Both Bob Hayward and I did send a letter thanking them for allowing us to use their high school auditorium on a sweltering August eighth evening where we were able to accommodate growing numbers of students and parents. We simply cannot comfortably accommodate them in our cafeteria. And our lecture hall only has a hundred and thirty seats. But the folks in Hanover didn't charge us. They were, they did right by us. We've had a great relationship with the town, and I thank them again for allowing us to do that. All of our parents and their children were able to come in here about the rules of the road with MIAA. So that was, that was a great night, and I am grateful for that. That's my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. All right, we'll move on to new business. We have the superintendent's evaluation. We have a copy of it. The evaluation was compiled by Bob Moller when he was the chairman. All the categories are exemplary in all categories, so I ask for a motion.
Motion to...
Okay, handled. Second by Whitman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, thank you all. Thank you, members of the committee.
I'd like to make one comment on that. We put it together exemplary, and I'm glad the motion was made for it. But the committee members really didn't get enough of them back for us. So it was, decision was made by very few of us. And I think next time, Mr. Chairman, you should, we pushed it. Matter of fact, we sent it out two or three times. The response was pretty lousy. And it's hard to blame it on the committee, but they're the ones that, or we're the ones that evaluate the superintendent, and it's not fair if everybody doesn't participate in it. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Next, the superintendent's goals, annual goals.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Document Nine, I bring to you every September a list of goals that I have set that would form the basis of an evaluation at the end of the year. And it's at this meeting that I would ask for your approval of these goals. I think they're in line with what we're trying to achieve here in, in multiple different areas. Thank you, Tom. Make a motion?
I'll second, Dan.
Second by Whitman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Next is the MASC conference. I ask that we make a motion for Danny Salvucci to be our representative there.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Situit.
Second.
Second by Rockland. Any discussion?
And when I come back, I will give my report as I need to do.
I'm sure you will. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And Dan gives me all the free pens and everything else he picks up there.
Whenever I can get there, just...
And we all get a little pen.
Yeah, I always get them. They hand them out. Last year's a book. But if you can enroll me, and I'll take care of the, like I normally do, you know, staying where I want to stay. I don't like paying the big price that they charge. But just enroll me as a delegate so I can...
No problem. Great. Thanks, Danny. Next, the new business, we have job description approvals. First one is for the transportation coordinator. So I ask for a motion from the transportation coordinator.
I'll make the motion.
All right. Noel makes the motion. Second by Situit.
Who's that big?
I'm sorry.
Who was, who's that person?
The plan, Bob, is to have our lead bus driver transition into that role.
And who is that?
Ruth Drake.
Okay. It's a big move. It's very big.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. The next one is the Director of Career and Community Development.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Hanover. Second by Cohasset. Any discussion?
Yes. I have one comment on that, Tom, and, you know, wherever did you work that out? I want to make it public. It's on the chair of the employment.
This is a, this is a non-union position, and so this would, this would be an individual employment contract.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Next one is the Administrative Assistant. I ask for a motion.
I'll vote.
By Situit?
Second.
By Noel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We'll move on. Facilities use for Brewster Ambulance. Tom, do you want to give an explanation on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, whenever there is a situation where facility use rental goes outside what our published policy or rates are, it's a matter for the school committee to deal with. The last time you, you would have done something like this would have been to waive the fees for the Learn to Cope organization that, that helps families who have loved ones dealing with drug addiction. This is slightly different. We're looking to expand the use of the school after hours for more workforce development. We want to be a hub for this activity. We think we're well-suited for it, and we also think that it might be an attraction for some of our alumni and older students to perhaps get more engaged. I would expect to have more to say to you in a month or so about an advanced manufacturing initiative that we might be able to run after hours as well through the, through a state grant. The bottom line for tonight's action is that Brewster Ambulance is the first step in, in trying to get more work-based instruction here. So we have, we've worked out an arrangement where Brewster Ambulance would use our facility. They would be using classrooms in the lecture hall. And for each class that they run, they would pay us six hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which is an odd way of figuring out a rate, but they're estimating that they'll be running three classes during the course of this school year, which is two thousand dollars. So I'm asking for your approval tonight to allow me to enter into a contract with them. And we would take that money in, and they would, they're, they're doing all the instruction. We're basically, we're basically the landlord. But they're also going to provide discounts on tuition to SSVT students and alumni as part of this arrangement.
I'll make that motion.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Situit. Second by Whitman. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is something that Tom and I have talked about in the past, as far as using our facility for something like this. Because I know my son, who is a firefighter, paramedic, and native, went to the school in Pembroke. And I'm saying, I know our students can't enroll in being a paramedic because, in fact, they have to be a certain age, and they're not the right age at the time. But the fact is, we have the facility and the equipment, basically, to start something like that. And I just think it's a great beginning for maybe, you know, getting things going. And somebody like, who would graduate from South Shore Vo-Tech, who wants to be a firefighter, paramedic, right? They need to be basically a paramedic. So they could maybe come back here and get the discount and continue and not be paying seven, eight, nine thousand dollars to become a paramedic.
The theme is, the theme is the same, built, trying to build relationships to give our students and graduates opportunities.
Yeah, it's, it's outstanding. I'm just so glad that we're able to step in that right direction.
Are they doing just a basic EMT course and then maybe someday go to paramedic?
That's my, that's my understanding, Bob. I could find out for you, but my, my understanding is that's where it started.
Yeah, yeah. Basically, EMT.
Yeah, but then they may go further.
Sure.
No, I just wondered if, we're not using them for our services here, like if we have a student injured or whatever, we're still going to the local...
Correct.
We're still local, we're still using our local Hanover...
Yep. Instructional purpose, correct, Bob. Instructional purposes only. Yep. Thank you. Thanks, Bob.
All right, next, surpluses for, do we take a motion there?
We get the vote on that one.
Oh, sorry. Motion by Noel. Second. Rockland?
Yep.
Any discussion?
I'll vote.
Thank you.
I'll get to it, Bobby.
I will. It's my first day.
You're doing good.
Go ahead, Smarter.
All right, surplus declarations. I guess we can just do...
All three of them?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion. We declare those items listed as surplus.
Okay. Motion made by Hanover?
Second.
Second by Abington. Any discussion?
Just make sure that they all get put up, all in local towns before they...
Every dictionary, every town, every town. You got it.
That's all. Listen, Rockland, if there's any...
Well, I would say, I would say, Mr. Chairman, I'm in contact with the Rockland Youth Commission because we've still got some ping-pong tables that will be heading their way. We surplus back in the summer, and so that's why we do it.
Great.
You know, that's why we pass along the will.
Great idea.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I have warrants number one, two, three. Three A, threw that in to screw me up. Four, five, six, and six A and six B. Totaling three million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, sixteen dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Me.
Oh, that's right. I told you, I'll get it. Hanover, second by Situit. All in favor? Oh, any discussions?
Aye.
All in favor? All right, great. Any requests for action? All right. I guess we can take the motion for adjourned.
With all due respect, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Rockland. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Great.